Cut and dry like enough for the water wells or I don't know, I'm just trying to, you know, where it's not really quite subject to the road per se, but gets it started down good path.
If I may, we do have an account established at this point for road bonds and this type of thing where we do hold monies, where people have to perform to a certain standard and then they can get those monies back once authorized by the road department.
The issue with this second layer of government trusses is we could take money and say, hey, our county's all good, but the BLM still may require that minerals exploration bond from them because it's their minerals. And I think what they're gonna hear from Jared today is even if we do approve this road agreement and send a letter saying we want to support their drilling and that we're all taken care of. I believe, I believe BLM is going to tell you without getting into details that they still have other issues going on that Western Oil is gonna have to get through. I know that we've heard that we're the only ones holding up the project, we're just one piece, I've said that every meeting. So, I'd like to do our part, secure the money, and then get out of all together. Let BLM take over because this is their project they permitted.
On the, on the agreement too?
Bill, would you speak to where, I'm sorry, I just, I've gotten some complaints.
Sorry. About me?
No, no, about people being able to hear and not know who's talking.
We noted one thing on the agreement, we did it, we noted it prior, that for some reason CR 11 has been on both agreements, that is in the next value order. That needs to change to 1171, that's the road that goes to their property. So that is definitely, we don't want, we want all the correct numbers on there and we wanna get the one 11 off of there. We call them WPs, but anyway, it needs to be changed, we wanna make sure we have all the listed roads on correctly. Thank you.
Can I catch Jared up real quick?
Yes.
Who may have missed? Wanna come on up here Jared for a second?
Sure.
Good morning Jared.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning. I did not receive anything in connection for this meeting, so I was assuming it was at nine, so I apologize.
Oh.
That's all right, that's what happened.
No worries.
Our apologies.
Somehow everyone got across all the time, so.
So Jared, what we got is we have a tentative agreement with Western Oil that would meet our local ordinance. So, except there's one part that we're discussing right now, and that's we're requiring them to obtain the appropriate minerals exploration bond that's approved and set, the money is set, the amount is set by BLM within thirty days of today's execution date. And that, that is something that BLM is requiring, and so we should require it too as part of our road agreement because it's only gonna benefit both our agencies and preparing that road in the future. So we wanted to speak, is that something that is possible for Western Oil to obtain within thirty days? So, generally. For Western Oil to bond on that road?
Would you mind taking up, so we could hear better? Thank you Jared, I'm sorry.
Okay, for Western, for Western Oil to bond on that road is a little tougher than it is for Western Gold to bond on that road? Because that, that road is, is part of Western Gold's plan of our mining notice. So, Western Gold has increased their bond on their mining notice to BLM. But if Western, Western Oil, we can only increase bonding for Western Oil for the actual APD itself. So it'd be easier for Western Gold to get the minerals exploration bond, is what you're saying?
Yeah, because, because Western Oil is fluids and, and Western Gold is low payables or hard rock.
And this agreement's with Western Gold, right? So it is, just because we're, I don't wanna get them confused, let's forget Western Oil for a second. Western Gold can obtain a minerals exploration bond.
Yeah, so one thing we have asked of, of Western Gold, the agency, and we have been working with representatives of Western Gold is that we've asked them that they can submit what's called a plan of exploration, which would help cover the additional disturbance out there with an additional bond. That would be a bond for an exploration plus a reclamation plan, or we have asked them to submit a restoration plan. And so then that, those are things that would potentially cover that additional disturbance that is beyond the mining notice.
If Western Gold submits either the plan of exploration with additional bond or a restoration plan, does BLM set or approve the amount, do the same calculation or similar type of calculation to figure out what the correct amount of the bond is? Or is that, do they need, which one comes first?
So, what come, is that, what would, the process is that Western Gold, if they submitted a plan of exploration with a proposed bond, then, then we would as an agency determine if that bond was sufficient enough to cover what they are proposing to do, and in this case, the plan of exploration would be to cover the additional disturbance. Because our requirement is going to be to return basically that disturbance back to as close to what it was as prior to the activities occurring.
Jared, is there anyone at the BLM that can assist with getting them in the ballpark for submission bonds? So that doesn't go back and forth, so they prepare their paperwork and say, here's, BLM will do a $200,000 bond, and you guys go, well, we really want a 350, because our calculations throw, I mean, how do they, that's shortcut that.
Okay, so, no, they have been working with our geologist Elizabeth Bennet and to work back and forth on that. Okay, so then ultimately what it comes down to is, is that conversation as well as it is me as the authorized officer to make a determination, and this will also be from assistance from our state office, from our bonding in the state office, to make a determination if that funding is, what's being bonded is adequate in order to cover those disturbances.
So a plan of exploration? A plan of exploration or a restoration plan? And they are working with, with Elizabeth already, Western Gold?
Yeah, we've already filed it with, with the BLM and Elizabeth is to review that.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, can we just clarify one thing? The, the bond that is being worked on, on now Jared, is, is that bond just to cover the access road to the drill site off of 1177 and the drill site itself, or does it include the county road also?
Okay, so, yeah, that's where you have to try to separate Western Oil and Western Gold because they have two different authorizations, even though some of the disturbances on top of each other simultaneously. So, Western Gold with part of their mining notice covered county roads. Okay, so that's, so for Western Oil, their requirement for Western Oil was to, on the county roads was to get authorization from the county, no different than any of their other permitting like with the state. And so then, as far as the BLM on Western Oil is, we want Western Oil to get back with the county and that they have to get in compliance with their application permit to drill for APD. That, that's Western Oil. Western Gold has a mining notice and their mining notice, part of their mining notice was covered where that APD is, where the Western Oil is, but also where the county roads are, because it's all federal minerals.
And that's why we're seeking this additional bond, because the one bond that's in place right now just covers that access road off of our county road to their drill site, pretty much.
Oh, no, that's not true.
You think it covers some of 1177 as well?
It does indeed, we had a previous bond for the access road. And then we increased that bond to go all the way from the access road to highway 50s.
And then, so now when they, when BLM evaluates Western Gold's bond, we'll just think two separate companies for a second, they'll take that consideration for the appropriate amount, so they're not double.
That's correct. So you have two things going on here with Western Gold. Okay, so they, Western Gold has increased their bond on their mining notice. Okay, that's a mining notice, what they are already authorized for, and any proponent can go and do that. That is perfectly fine, it happens all the time. But for any disturbance beyond that mining notice, that is where the agency is requiring either a plan of exploration or a restoration plan.
Because a disturbance is much more than the original plan?
Than the original.
For both companies really.
Yeah, the disturbance is greater than what that mining notice authorized for Western Gold. Disturbance is greater than what the APD authorized for Western Oil.
Okay. And this, this process of obtaining the bonding and turning in the restoration plan or the plan of exploration and that's usually something as long as the communication is working that can be done within thirty days?
Well, the plan of exploration depending on whether we have to do some additional meter or not, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the bonding can't be
Obtained.
obtained and determined.
Turned in.
Right.
So even if you don't sign off on the plan of exploration, the bonding can be in place, kind of?
Well, the bonding needs to be, we wouldn't necessarily take the bonding until that plan of exploration is accepted because taking that bonding means that we've accepted it.
I get it, okay. Just trying to hammer it out in all fairness to the parties. Because again, I, we're not trying to, we're not trying to hide the ball here, the county is just after the bond. We just wanna make sure we have something in place.
So is any way on the commission to have anything for, for Jared, I appreciate you coming down here, I really do. We really wanna take an action on this today to finally get it started or put it a bit simple as that. You've explained to us in detail and the DA has kind of summarized it for us. Would you have, do you have any other concerns that might come up from the BLM to Western Oil and Western Gold, is there anything else that would maybe throw a roadblock into here? Without going into detail.
So, as far as the administrative remedies that we have been giving, it's really in the hands of Western Gold, Western Oil to come forward and, and meet those obligations, requirements that the agency has placed upon them. And that's just as simple as that.
Jared, one of the things I told, before you showed up, I'll turn it up to save you a little bit here. It said, even if we check off our boxes for local compliance and local ordinances, the BLM still has some other administrative hoops that Western Gold, Western Oil might need to satisfy.
So, I mean.
It's not all hung up on our local ordinances.
No, no, this is only one, what the county's involvement is just one, one piece of it. And so, from, from agencies, for the agency that is that not only our requirements, but part of that, those authorizations for both Western Oil and Western Gold have a requirement to be in conformance with all federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. And so, they have a requirement to meet state requirements as well as the local and the federal. So for White Pine County, that is, that is just one entity out of numerous entities that they need to conform to.
And that, and we need to put on our hats and just think about our role in it. This is a project that BLM permitted and BLM has their situation with Western Oil, Western Gold. We just are concerned with obtaining that protection and bond and road maintenance agreement for protect our county taxpayers' obligation, pretty much.
I'm sorry, I have a little bit of confusion. So the increase in the bond that Western Gold did, really, even though it was increased, still does not benefit them in the way that with the bond that they need to get now for the road, that will satisfy the county, is that correct?
The way I understand it Lori is, they did increase their bond, but it's still not adequate for the disturbance that's been, been done. And so they have, that's why the BLM is saying, there's enough disturbance here that mineral exploration plan is necessary.
Right, the distinction there Commissioner Carson is that the bond they increased is for their existing authorization.
Right.
The mining notice versus what BLM is requiring, which is a plan of exploration or a restoration plan.
Okay.
And so then, which path that is taken is up to Western Oil. They wanna file a plan of exploration with a reclamation plan or just purely a, a plan or, or sorry, if they want to file a plan of exploration with a reclamation plan like any mining company would do, or if they just wanna file a restoration plan, either one of those needs to be bonded to cover the disturbance.
John, thank you.
Jared, I just had a question, so say this bond gets all done and everything and, and then we end up having to use it, what is the process of the county working with the BLM to get that? Does the money just come to us, or do you guys get the contractors, or maybe just touch on that process so I know?
So I think that, that process is really gonna depend on how the county decides to move forward with who they wanna have fix that road, if you wanna have Western Oil slash Western Gold be a third party to take that on. Because that bond is, its bond is BLM, it's not bonded to the county. So basically what the commission would have to be saying is that we're aware of this bond that BLM has gotten for either a plan of exploration or a restoration plan and that we feel that that covered our needs. And if that's the case, then that would be the decision for the county.
So that, if we did request those funds, you know, ideally Western Oil and Gold would fix the road and won't have to do it. But if we did request the funds, would you be able just to, in a sense, write us a check? Or all the contractors and all that are gonna have to go through a BLM type of a solicitation?
So if they're, so if Western Gold, Western Oil is bonding to BLM, then that would go through BLM because their bond would require that restoration on that road as well as other disturbances that are outside of the existing authorization.
That'd be my concern.
We wouldn't be able to trade money to the county if that's what you're asking.
Because, because who hires the road contractor? Jared, who would hire the road contractor and fix it then?
County, because it is county right of way.
And if we fix it, a road contractor, what, how does the bond benefit us?
The, if you hire a contractor outside just strictly for the county, then that bond probably would not, because then the county would still have to pay that contractor.
Okay, so how does the bond benefit the county then? Or how does, how does the bond secure that road's gonna get fixed so that BLM and the county are made whole?
Okay, so, Western, Western Gold slash Western Oil, they, they bond for that plan of exploration or restoration plan, then part of that bonding would be the requirement, especially with the reclamation part, to return that road.
Oh, to obtain that money in return, it's like a, it's like a deposit, they have to get it fixed.
They have to get it fixed, yes.
My question on that is, what if your needs exceed the amount of the bond? And there was nothing left, let's say the disturbance to the BLM land was more than what the bond was worth and then we still have the road to fix, who's gonna come up with the money for that or how are we gonna do that? And that's, that'd be a big concern to us because, you know, contracting all kinds of different, and I'm not trying to get too deep into it, but if there's a lot of claims by the BLM that exceed the amount of the bond, then there's not enough money left in there to give to the county for the road, right? So that's my, that would be my question about that, because the bond is for many things, not just the road is for you guys first, you're first in line, we're second.
I actually thought it was different, so the bond appears is just a lever to, to get the permit T to clean up their mess if they wanna see their lever back, their money back, that's all it is. It does, it's not, it's just a mechanism to induce them to restore the land, to receive their deposit. That's the way I see it, it's not actually used to hire a contractor to fix anything.
That, that's why, to my point is, they could go to a check today, put it in that account, and then, you know, we're making actual progress and can access that money. Whereas this route, that road could be that way for years or never end up.
Correct, and then the only other thing we have, if Travis, we wanna go that way, and I'm with you on this now, is how do we come up with the appropriate amount?
Yeah, I mean that's, or if got a piecemeal approach or, you know, I don't know.
Because it sounds like we're, no matter what we do, they still have to get their minerals exploration bond to BLM. If we just quit right down Jared and just never had another meeting on this ever again, would BLM still require mineral exploration and restoration plan from, from Gold?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a thought, so it doesn't matter what we do.
And they would require us to clean, if, if it all washes away today, we would still be required to repair that road when the right of way expires.
Uh, that's what the paperwork says though.
Right.
So, I mean.
That's what the paperwork says.
Okay. So.
We talked about that, we didn't wanna talk about this much today.
All right.
That's what the paperwork says, we're required to, to return that right of way in the same, or similar conditions which we were granted it.
So is this kind of, just asking you, because it's the, is this a satisfactory arrangement? Is a BLM satisfied with this kind of arrangement? We wanna make sure that.
So, BLM, we haven't determined the appropriate amount of bonding yet for a plan of exploration. So right now, as far as, you know, a little, I would say some steps have been taken by Western Oil, where they, they did, where they increased the bond on their existing mining notice. But, and then Mr. Franklin said that he, he had submitted a package to our geologist yesterday, but nothing has been met yet as far as, from the agency's perspective. So we haven't determined the appropriate amount of bonding yet, we haven't accepted that plan of exploration yet. It's just starting.
I'm gonna ask for a closed litigation session meeting, we'll take a five minute break. Is that your right turn?
Yes, at this, at this time, we look for a motion to close the session for special litigation and then we'll be right back. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Travis, all those in favor?
I agree.
Motion out of the table break while we do the special litigation meeting. Here we are, I don't need a motion to back in, do I, Mike, if you don't go up here? We go back in to the meeting after our, our litigation meeting. We're still discussing the, the Resolution 2020-48. Can we give the order to the closure of 1177?
No, no, I'm due.
We're, we're discussing the satisfactory agreement between, that the BLM is satisfied with the agreement that we are hopefully about to make, is that right Mike?
That's correct, we just need to try to see if we can get an agreement with Western Gold.
Okay.
Do you wanna take the lead on what we discussed Mike?
No, go ahead Travis.
Yeah, I'll let Travis.
That was advice, so you guys can kinda figure out what you wanna do.
So what we discussed is we would strike the paragraph with the BLM bonding requirements since that's kind of, doesn't really benefit, do us any good and rather just require a cash bond from Western Oil within thirty days. We fit, we, you know, we just kind of spitball, but thought about 500,000, do it, do within thirty days. At that time, we would trigger the letter that says, no objections to letting Western Oil resume, which you see in number one, and then that cash bond, you know, would be delivered back at time that the road is fixed and wells in and water wells, et cetera.
Yeah, the idea is because the county can, especially if we get the water and gravel in place of Western Gold, the county can repair those roads for so much cheaper than a road contractor to try to save Western Gold that money. And then that money all goes back to Western Gold when those roads are brought up, you know, and maintained. So, the other thing that Leonard is talking about, that we send to BLM can also talk about that we can even state boldly that all local laws, ordinances, and conditions have been met and get that completely checked off their list.
And would that, excuse me, would that bonding be then a reimbursement as the county, if the county were going forward with the work, either hiring contractors to assist or whatever, that would be reimbursable as the process?
Correct, I'd like to see, be, just like any other, we charge against it and then we can refund to Western Gold what's on.
That's no question.
But it's, but just like anything else, we have to track that money. But if, they could easily, if they can figure out how to maintain the roads for the project and get all the investors aboard and everything's working well, they can repair that road and just get the bond back, have it all done, so.
And then this also is, you know, this can be done this week or, you know, if the money is actually there, you know, then we're.
As soon as that money's in the bank, there's, I mean, that's always what I've said, we just need some of those assurances. And then with, then they're not having to mess with BLM through trying to go through a permit to get our releases. Because I think that's what's been problematic over the last month for James, is that we keep requiring him to get through the BLM tape, but that, that's his, they're still working on that and they don't need us to be tying him up for that as well. So, I think that could work. Maybe just change.
I guess, I don't, if James wants to come up, or I can make the motion, or if he can do that or, or not, or I don't, I, I guess that's what it comes down to.
Let's hear the motion on the dollar amount, then we'll let James come up and speak to whether that's, that's agreeable, is that okay? Let's make a motion on what we, what we conceive as a dollar amount to be put into the White Pine County treasure. Is that right, and then that, we'll make, we'll, we'll call James up to see if that's satisfactory.
Yeah, and if you recall, the original agreement, we tried to get Enjex involved, it was three and a half million dollars. It's what Enjex as a contractor said it would take to repair that road. And then we've had other discussions, other contractors, but we, that's just too big of a sum. We wanted, we are trying to be as realistic as possible about what it would take our road department to bring that road back. So we can give it back, because it expires, the right of way expires in the next couple of years. We have to give it back to BLM, and we're very responsible for fixing it, so. Let's just, we're just trying to cover the bare minimum so Western Oil and Western Gold can get going with the project and that we cover what our expenses, the road department's going to be.
Okay, so I move to make a motion that in, in the working agreement we have now, we strike the sentences or paragraph that talks about obtaining a sufficient BLM bond and add in that Western Gold slash Western Oil put in a cash bond with the county in the amount of 500,000 due within thirty days
Yep.
of full execution of this road agreement.
And then that letter, just so it's part of your motion now, we'll get to item one and say, I guess we can do that separately, the other item.
Yeah.
Second. And I'd just like to clarify that, that, that not only the, the restoration of the road, but also the two wells in the gravel pits be in place for the return of that bond.
And we'll have that, that's in the agreement, I think, the wells in the gravel as well. For, oh, for the return of the bond that they're, they've built and true.
Yes.
Yeah.
Second. And you satisfied that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Travis and a second by Ian with the, the, the gendarmas that Shane has brought up. Is there any other discussion by the commission right now? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor.
I, I.
Opposed, no in passion, and that was on item two. We're gonna go, is that right Mike?
You guys had asked for, for James.
Oh yeah, James, come on, hold.
Explain to them also what the next item is and what you'll be considering.
I, so, I guess, so depending on what James has to say here, but number one, that letter will be triggered once we have receipt of the money, right?
And, and to clarify for James again, that letter is an endorsement of the project and that all our local ordinances and laws, if they have been met by Western Oil, Western Gold, we'll send it right over to BLM so that we know everything, so they'll know that we're all good, we are all taken care of, the assurances are here. That's what the letter is.
Yeah, I mean, Western Oil is not in a position to post a packling cash bond today. We have to, we were pursuing bonds for a larger amount of money prior to this and, you know, the, the BLM, we understood was to control the road, and that's why we went the route that we did. We do have commitments from investors, but with the rigs in out there waiting, you know, the, the investors are waiting. I've gotta get the investors behind me. If we can't get someplace in between where we can let that rig continue to drill and bring in this well, you know, I can't get the confidence of the investor behind me. That's really where I'm at, I've got commitments. You know, we've got about $3,000 right now, we've got enough to finish that well and additional commitments for $5 million to come in once we get that permission. But I wanna tell you something today that I cannot do and with all due respect, I can't, I cannot tell you I'm gonna get you a half billion dollars in thirty days or before we get this letter. We're basically stopped until we can basically continue to drill.
Okay, that was part of the discussion, that, this really needs to be in place because we're, we're really, we're on the heart, like, to continue on with this meeting after meeting. We, we've stepped forward, well, the county needs the half a million dollars to proceed with this project. You have told us that you probably can't come up with that money, you know, within thirty days. So the county's in a position right now, without that commitment, we cannot proceed to go any further with this project. We, we're gonna have to, uh, I mean, that's my, I'm just trying to get a consensus on what the county's feeling.